I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, November 6, 2024. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will begin with the superintendent and board member report.
All right. November 6th. Here we are. November 6th. Spotlight on Students, we had the STEAM Festival last, last weekend. Thirty-one exhibitors, well over four hundred participants. What a great, what a great day. Just thank you to everybody who came out and thank you for everybody who facilitated that learning and, and really kind of flamed that spark. There is definitely STEM education is alive and well. And in fact, the arts integration STEAM is, is alive and well in St. Mary's County. We'll finish with what some of the great arts things that are going on. Spotlight on Students Band Competition. So I know that we probably almost did get to the point where like, oh, we're state champions again. But we keep on, we are states, like we have some of, we have one of the very best musical programs, period, in, in, obviously in the state, but also nationally ranked. So Leonardtown being a group three, in group three, they are the state champions and sixth nationally. Chopticon High School, 1A, state champions and third place in the national championship. Unbelievably impressive. Thank you to all of the people who put countless hours in to make this a reality for our kids. Not only all of the fantastic musicians that comprise the bands, but all of the adults who are there, specifically our, our people on staff, but also our parents.
Oh, yes.
If you are, if you are a band parent, you have committed a great deal of your time to making sure that your child has that moment on the field and what a, what a fantastic recognition. Spotlight on Students Red Ribbon Week, coinciding with Halloween, obviously. Great celebrations all the way across. Dr. Marr did want to know how I got to Green Holly to be in the picture, alluding to the fact that anger in the back ends up looking like me quite often. I'll take it. New staff, new teacher visits. So we have concluded all of our visits as of last, on November 1st. So we've gone to talk to each one of our, all of our new teachers, offering them an opportunity for an hour long, just, just a conversation where we ask them how they came here, how they're doing, how the induction process overall met their, met their needs, and then take suggestions that they might want to have to make things even better for the next round of people coming to join St. Mary's County Public Schools. And I asked them two questions, what, something that fascinates them and then something that's given them delight. And fascinating, people keep on coming back to that, they're, they're just fascinated by children. People who go into education, they go into education because they love children and they are fascinated by the, the way they learn, the way they interact, their personalities, the way they show it, and when they find them in unguarded moments, like when they see them in their natural element and recess and things like that. So a great conversation. And the group from Esperanza Middle School in particular, really tight, close-knit group, and all of them coming on at the same time and being able to share the experience and support for one another. They said that that's really been a big component of what has welcomed them to St. Mary's County. So pretty cool. We are not alone. Parents, oh, today, they're all in Hack. So log into Hack, go see how your child did with their report card for the very first quarter. If the grades they have earned meet expectation, take them out to dinner. If they don't, talk to them about how they're going to modify their academic commitment in the second marking period. Overall, we are definitely seeing that our kids are coming to school ready to learn. We, we still struggle a little bit with attendance. So if your child is taking mental health days and things such as that, tell them that the best way to move forward is to be part and to be part of school every single day. So that's going to be a big piece. When you are in the Home Access Center, and this was sent out, I'm highlighting Piney Point, their, their Beacon Bulletin, because while we're in there, federal forms are in there. In fact, the Impact Aid Form is, is in the Home Access Center. There's a video for how to do it. We need parents to fill this information out. This is how St. Mary's County receives federal funds to offset the fact that we have so many military-connected families who are not paying necessarily the same level of tax burden as somebody who is, is, has grown up here and in the county. So please make sure that you fill out that form, take a look at it, click through. Read your smore, because if you're reading your smore, you're also seeing the, the school news that's going on and they're sharing photos of all the kids. So we have opportunities for people on the certified and non-certified side. Please visit our website, hit the big red button. We definitely still have instructional opportunities as well as those people who support classroom instruction. Please take the time to look at it. November, it is indeed November 6th. Yesterday was the election day for St. Mary's County. I would like to congratulate Ms. Kathy Allen, Ms. Mary Washington, on being reappointed to the Board of Education and continuing your exceptional tenure of service to children in St. Mary's County. It is obvious that the community deeply values and respects your work and wants you to continue just the way you have been doing that work. So thank you and to Josh Guy, looking forward to seeing you join us in December. We have a two-hour early release on Friday. That's a great opportunity to then go get your tickets to go see the Chopticon version of Romeo and Juliet. We have a long weekend. Veterans Day is off. Please come to Leonardtown High, Leonardtown City proper. There's going to be a great parade. We have another opportunity to see a play at Leonardtown High School on the 15th and then Great Mills High School on the 22nd. That will then bring us to Thanksgiving weekend. There is much to be thankful for in St. Mary's County. And then just in case you wanted to know, I wanted to make it big because I know this is kind of small. So there it is, right there. November 7th through 9th, Chopticon High School Romeo and Juliet. November 15th through 17th, Leonardtown High School The Curious Savage, a very interesting little comedy, and then a crowd favorite, a feel-good, wonderful way to kick off that Thanksgiving time in your heart at Great Mills High School on November 22nd through the 24th. And with that, I turn it over to Ms. Hannah Heisler.
All right. Good morning. So a little update for my school visits. I have eight complete, so just about almost halfway there. And I do have two more coming up before the next board meeting. Ooh, it says two. It should say 11. But 11:14, Ms. Hollywood Elementary, and then the 15th is Margaret Brent, Principal's Advisory Council. And then for SLAC, we are having new additions to our Steering Committee, which is the body that runs SLAC. So there have been some people that have reached out and saying that they're interested in the leadership position and want to help make further decisions to decide what we're doing at SLAC, which is super exciting. And then for St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, we held our General Assembly meeting on Halloween, October 31st, and we actually elected our next secretary. So that was super exciting. Congratulations to Isabella Derasavi. And we also had three workshops presented by SMASK Executive Board members from Chopticon, Great Mills, and Leonardtown. I presented a workshop about Halloween candy and meeting your local representatives. So it was just a really fun way. Everybody got candy at all the workshops. It was super fun. And we actually had a really great turnout to SMASK. We had fifty-nine delegates from seven middle and high schools, which is very good for us, since those kids are coming from their student government associations and are leaving school to attend this meeting. So that was super, super great, a really good turnout. From Chesapeake Public Charter School, we had seven. From Leonardtown Middle School, we had five. From Margaret Brent Middle School, we had six. From Chopticon High School, we had twelve. From Great Mills High School, we had eight. From Leonardtown High School, we had seventeen. And from St. Mary's Reiken, we had four. So that was awesome to see everybody out. For Maryland Association of Student Councils, I am presenting a workshop at the Fall Leadership Conference on November 23rd, and I am looking forward to seeing all of St. Mary's County go to the state level to meet more people and branch out and learn new things and get leadership experience. So very exciting. For my first school visit to Evergreen Elementary School, you can see a picture of all of us. You might have to really look closely to find me, but I am in there. I'm hidden. So they mentioned how important it is to be here, to be present, to learn. They actually have student ambassadors to help kindergarteners. So that incentivizes them to be here and helps kindergarteners get more acquainted with the school. And fifth grade is actually one of the winning classes for attendance, which is super great because fifth grade is typically the hardest class to get to, to be here because they're older and kind of sick of school after six years, ready to be rejuvenated at middle school. But they have ninety-four point nine percent attendance, and as you can see in the picture, they are winning. So super exciting. For Engaged, they mentioned that they have one person speaking at a time and they have a pause incentive with a pause cart, and they can earn pajama days. And they also have book buddies that read to kindergarteners. So very exciting way to get engaged in what they're learning. It definitely helps kindergarteners to be engaged when they have older kids that they look up to reading to them. For Approachable, they talked about how they wanted to feel comfortable in school and making friends and helping others and preventing bullying. Another way that they're more approachable to other students across the county is they have pen pals at Leonardtown High School. So they practice writing to those pen pals throughout the year, and they really mentioned that they love that. For Being Renewed, they have a lot of activities such as PE and recess that they really loved, as well as community gathering, which is an opportunity for the whole school to come together. They really mentioned how much they love their strings band and arts, as well as their spirit week. They're doing The Little Mermaid for the musical. The day that we visited was actually the day that the cast list was announced. So they were very stressed in anticipating that. And then they also mentioned that they have fun field trips to the Blue Crabs game and canoeing and end-of-the-year high fives. My next school visit was at George Washington Carver. So my picture is not in the middle of them, so you can actually see me in that picture as well as all the kids. George Washington Carver really emphasized the idea that being present and on time is also meaning that they are not tardy. And so again, fifth grade be attendance. So two schools with a winning attendance streak. And to incentivize attendance, they have this thing called pants. So that incentivizes being here and present with no tardies. And so it's actually a pair of pants that gets passed around to the winning class with the best attendance, which is very fun. And every single day, they also say their SOR pledge, so that kind of reaffirms their values on why they want to be here. They mentioned how important it is to be attentive with only one person talking at a time and eyes on the speaker, and they do super engaging things in school. They mentioned that they really love their STEM activities, specifically building cars and working with acid makes them super engaged in learning and science. And we went around and everybody said that their favorite subject was science and math, so that was super great to hear.
Yeah, they did.
Which is not, not typical.
Right. Atypical behavior down there, but yeah, they, they said they love working with acid. Chemical reactions. Let's be very clear.
So great way to get them engaged in learning. Approachable, they really mentioned how they want to accept things with open arms, which is something that we haven't heard yet. They talked about including others, being kind with no bullying, and they shouted out their great teachers and students. To Be Renewed, they talked about how important it is to turn a bad day around. One way they do that is at community gathering, which is a way for them to come together as a school. They do dancing and jokes, and it's just a really fun way to get them all on board and have a good day. They also have Carver Cash, which they mentioned that they really love to buy talkies. That's their favorite thing to buy with Carver Cash, which I love talkies, so great snack. And they also talked about building robots in Makerspace. And they have a Good News Club, and they're starting a gardening club after school, which is very fun.
And so ends the update. Those are, I mean, they're really, it's, it's really wonderful, and that's the one thing that I, that I really enjoy, and I think Ms. Heisler is enjoying as well. Each school, each, we're all in the same county, we're all in the same school system, we're all following the same policies and regs and everything, but each school has its own really interesting personality. It's, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of fun to see that come through.
Okay. This, we don't have anything else. So recognitions, it is School Psychology Awareness Week, and we have Mrs. Weaver and Ms. Fox. And Dr. Marr running the computer.
Good morning. My name is Kate Weaver, Supervisor, Student Services, and it is privileged to be here this morning to share and expressing appreciation for our school psychologists during National School Psychology Week. From November 11th to the 15th, which is next week, I am joined this morning by Ashley Fox, our School Psychologist Department Chair. This upcoming week celebrates the contributions of school psychologists and the important role that they play in schools and communities. This is an annual opportunity to recognize school psychologists' work to help children thrive in school, at home, and in life. This year's theme Spark Discovery recognizes the work that school psychs do to help their communities seek out new ideas, affect change, and expand horizons for children and youth. Next week, we embark on our journey of discovery, explore how each person can celebrate the work of the school psychologist, and learn how school psychs help students, families, and communities every day. I now invite Ashley to help me recognize our wonderful team.
Good morning. Good morning. I thank you for this opportunity to highlight the field of school psychology and our talented team of school psychologists here at St. Mary's County. Our team currently includes seventeen hard-working school psychologists. This morning, I would like to introduce to you our newest team member, Ms. Megan Shandall. This is her right here next to me. Megan joined our team this school year. While she is new to us, she is not new to the field. She currently serves Leonardtown Elementary School and Mechanicsville Elementary School. Megan brings with her a contagious energy and a love of school psychology. She began her year by bringing social-emotional learning techniques and professional development to her schools. She actively seeks the newest information and research in the field by attending conferences, such as the Maryland School Psychologists Association Conferences, and she often learns new assessment tools. She is an advocate for utilizing culturally appropriate assessment tools to gain the most helpful information for all of our students, to get the most meaningful information for programming for them and deciding what their needs are. She finds joy in supporting students' mental health and academic success. Every day presents the opportunity to make a meaningful difference in young lives by fostering resilience, understanding, and growth. She enjoys collaborating with teachers and friends to create nurturing environments where students can thrive. Also with us this morning is Mia Bataglia. Mia currently serves Piney Point Elementary School and Ridge Elementary School. She joined our team in the fall of 2020 and has been a pillar ever since. She showcases her knowledge and passion daily through the work she does with students, staff, and families. She is an active coach of her school's multi-tiered systems of support teams. Mia provides countywide training as a crisis prevention institute instructor. She provides professional development to her buildings and the administrators across the county on de-escalation techniques to help regulate students in the times that they need it the most. Mia enjoys that our role involves participating in multiple school teams that are all designed to support our students in different ways. She values the unique position we hold to be able to integrate all the information and advocate for the support from a, for support, support from a whole child perspective.
Thank you. And thank you guys for helping us celebrate, and we invite Dr. Smith to come up and make the resolution.
Yes, ma'am. Now you know you'll eventually have to transition in front of this so we can get the photo, but that's, you can stand here. No, no, this is good. No. Stay right here for right now. Stand by me as I read. And thank you for being here so much. Whereas the week of November 11th through the 15th, 2024, has been designated as National School Psychology Week in school systems across the nation. And whereas children and youth learn best when they are healthy, supported, and receive an education that enables them to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. And whereas schools can more effectively ensure that all students are able to learn when they meet the needs of the whole child and provide integrated, multi-tiered supports. And whereas school psychologists are specially trained to help parents and educators identify and reduce risk factors, create effective caring schools, access helpful community resources, and implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies to foster healthy child development and academic success. And whereas the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the important role that school psychologists play in the personal and academic development of our children. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes November 11th through 15th, 2024, as School Psychologist Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all staff and students are encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance. Sign the state by the board. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Let's transition over so we can get a lovely picture. You shall hold. Here we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We have no public hearing this morning. Any public comment? Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for October 23rd, 2024, personnel, teachers, and personnel administrative and supervisory. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion is still carried. We are moving on to the action items. Let's see. Ms. Ayana, we have the contract award for the chiller and cooling tower replacement at Great Mills High School.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is the recommendation for award for the general contractor for the chiller at Great Mills High School. The request is for approval to award a contract in the amount of one million five hundred thirty-three thousand five hundred fifty-eight to provide construction services and one hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-two for contingency to Gagan Mechanical, Inc., for the chiller and the cooling tower replacement at Great Mills. A little bit of a story, we've had for the past three years, the critical funds, little amounts to start the project. Started with the design in FY '22, '23, and '24, and we finally were able to get the good amount to put out the project to bid. We realized last month that we were short in the amount that we needed, and that's when we came back and asked you all for some budget transfers so that we could be able to bid this project. We got seven hundred fifty-three thousand supplementals, and thank you for that. We put the project out to bid on our traditional multi-step procurement process, where we put out first a bid to pre-qualify bidders based on technical, legal expertise, and then we put it back with the pre-qualified bidders for price proposals. We got on August 28th is when we did the RFP on eMaryland Marketplace. We got five contractors submitted their technical proposals. Out of those five, two were pre-qualified to submit, and two firms did submit on October 23rd. For the selection, we're recommending Gagan Mechanical. They are well known in the area, but most likely now with us, they've been doing recently, they, they did the Chopticon chiller, and they are doing currently the mechanical, Mechanicsville chiller too. They came as the lowest bidder. So I added a chart with our proposed fees to include both bidders and how we plan on using our base bid. We did put an alternate in our, on our RFP for pumps. If I don't have contingency, I can award that alternate today, but if the contingency is very, if I use that all for the pumps, it's too short and I don't feel comfortable going so early. So what we're going to do is ask for the total amount for contingency, and if I can get the chiller replaced and there is no ups in the, in the meantime, then we'll go ahead and order the pumps and then the project is complete. If not, we will have to get funds at a later time and replace the, the pumps. And at this time, my recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
So do you know when this project will be implemented in Great Mills High School?
So there is a lead time on every chiller. This particular chiller is about thirty weeks lead time. So we, that's why we're rushing to get that. Usually, we do not do budget transfers until we bid, then we know how much money we need, but we, we knew we were short. That's why we did that last month to earn, gain some time. We understand that we are running out of time, so hopefully mid-spring is when this chiller is planned to be replaced.
Will this happen to close down any part of the school for the repair or?
No.
Okay.
The capital improvement estimate was about a million dollars, replaced at three hundred and twenty-five tonne. Yeah, that's about three thousand per tonne, which in my mind is reasonable. Now it's a forty-five hundred dollars per tonne. Can you explain the difference of going up fifty percent on the budget?
When we started this project, it was a single compressor. There is no way, in a high school, in the size of a high school, we like to have two chillers. Chopticon has two chillers. That's the, the idea. We look and hire the engineer to make sure we could do that, and we couldn't. The space is very limited, and the piping is not there. So for us, the best recommendation that the engineer came with is let's go with a dual compressor. So that the compressors are most likely the piece that is going to go wrong if it fails. So if you have a dual compressor, not the whole building will go down. Doesn't make sense. So it's a safety for us. It's a little bit more money, but I think at the end, we will get a better product for the size of the school, if that makes sense.
Have you ever considered of just stopping the procurement and reissuing a new RFP to try to get the prices down?
This one has been, this is the third time, sir, that we bid this one.
It keeps on, yeah.
And it keeps going up. And ever after COVID, everything mechanically went up. So, yes.
Still a half a million dollars is a lot of money.
Yep.
But again, that, that cost is to have a system so that we would not, so that we guard against a, a failure of the entire system.
Yes.
Instead, it would be, it would, it would be moderated by having the dual compressor. And that is, that, I mean, that is an expense, but considering we only do these every twenty-five years, take five hundred thousand dollars, spread it over twenty-five years, and if we end up in a good shape because of it, I think that that, I think that, that's, that was more or less the conversation around the table.
Yeah. If, if the chiller fails, the only other option that we have is a temporary chiller, and that is really expensive for us.
Five hundred thousand dollars, pretty fast.
So this is the best approach we can do at this moment.
That's all I have. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you. I think the idea of a dual compressor under the circumstances is absolutely the way to go. And as I read through everything, the thought that if we don't do this, that we will find ourselves in a position where we have at other schools, where we have to bring in a temporary chiller to make the building habitable. bring in a temporary chiller to make the building habitable for students and staff. And so at the cost, the cost of a temporary chiller is pretty significant. I think that spending this money upfront will save us in the long run. And I appreciate that you did pursue a number of options and rebid it several times in order to try to address some of the concerns. So thank you for your due diligence. It's something that we've seen from you over and over, and very much appreciated. You clearly know what you're doing, and, and it shows, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the construction award to Gagan Mechanical, Incorporated, in the amount of one million five hundred thirty-three thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars, and a construction contingency in the amount of one hundred eighty-three thousand three hundred fifty dollars for the chiller and cooling tower replacement at Great Mills High School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have two information items this morning. First one is the BECA Scholarship Program. Dr. Marr.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
And I am joined by Dr. Bob Schaller, or as he's known affectionately in the community as Becca Bob. And we're gonna be talking a little bit about the Common Scholarship Program, which is a community effort to provide scholarships for our students. It is a joint effort, as, as Dr. Schaller will talk about, but we're very proud of the partnership that we have because of the resources it provides our students as they graduate, and then come back to work in our community as well. So with that, I'm gonna have Bob provide a little bit of background for us.
Thank, thank you, Jeff, Dr. Marr. And thank you for having us here. It's been a little bit, maybe five years, I think, before, since pre-COVID, since we've been here, and congratulations, extend this, congratulations to you, Jim, as well. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Lot of, lot of good work. But so, the background, some of you may know this, but just to remind you, we celebrate our thirty-fifth year this year, the Business Education Community Alliance, which formed as a partnership between the Saint Mary's County Public School System and the Saint Mary's County Chamber of Commerce, thirty-five years ago. And we've morphed, as all nonprofits do and have to, to stay relevant, and we got involved in scholarships as a nonprofit in nineteen ninety-five, and then we expanded that role to include, to be a clearinghouse for lots of local scholarships in two thousand and seven officially. So early history was, we, back, go back to the late eighties, early nineties, there weren't computers in schools. And we were, we were asked, that was really the catalyst, how can you get computers into schools, because we're falling behind with industry? And we worked locally, we held a golf outing and raised some money, and we got some computers, and we put them in a school. We did a Passport to the Future program, some of you may remember.
Oh, yes, I do.
To get students engaged in, in learning and attendance, and some of the same issues that you're dealing with today. We gave middle school grants then, and we figured out, five years in, maybe there's another way we can contribute that has a broader effect, and that's how we got into the scholarship program. What you see here is a picture from nineteen ninety-nine. We started the scholarships, we were awarding five hundred dollar scholarships to each of the four high schools, the three public schools in Saint Mary's Ricon, starting in nineteen ninety-five. Through last year, or this year, last spring, we have awarded three hundred and six scholarships, and amounting to almost three hundred thousand dollars. We, we went up in increments. Thank you all, the community, for your, for your donation. There's one student there, third from the left, Amber Lyon, I think? If you can expand on that.
Yeah, so I, I was pointing this out to, to Bob when we were looking at these pictures before, but yeah, the third from the left, Amber Lyon, now Amber Ripple, she's in her twentieth year as a teacher at Bannaker now, she taught my children, so it's just amazing to see that the, the impact that this program has. That's just, that's one picture, but I think it captures so much of the impact of someone who can get a little scholarship at the beginning, and then come back and dedicate their service back to the community. And I think that's really what BECA has, is all about.
Yeah, just, I did, I had to do some research, it's, it's been a while. She went to Saint Mary's College and matriculated, and then went on to go into the school system. What many, the BECA scholarships, and then even the scholarships that we help through the Common Application, are, are low denomination, small denominations, they're five hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. They're not full rides, they're not the kind of big money that students have access to. When you, when you read the, you get your graduation program, and you say, our students have amassed four point eight billion dollars in scholarships, well, a lot of that is the grants given by the schools they're going to. We're not in that league. We, we offer what I call, call first dollar scholarships. And to many students, getting a five hundred dollar scholarship when they've not gotten anything is like gold. So that's the kind of message to get across, is the money that you give in the community, every dollar goes to these students, and it, and it means more than just helping to pay for this or that, it means, you know, an acknowledgement of their, you know, of their success. So, so two thousand and seven, we segwayed from individual scholarships to what we call the BECA Common Scholarship Application. And just, not to go through all of this, but we have really grown this from ten providers in the beginning, now we have dozens of providers. And last year, we awarded two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in one hundred and fifty-one scholarships. We didn't award those, we coordinated the award of those. We, BECA awarded five of those scholarships for five thousand, but you can see the leverage that we were able to affect by being a clearinghouse, and with the help of the school system to, to make that possible. The other part of that that you don't see on any of these is, is the role that the, the high school career, college and career counselors, did I say that right?
Yeah.
Advisors? So, so Ms. Heisler, you're at Leonard Town?
Mm-hmm.
So Ms. Wilson, you know Ms. Wilson? Make sure you talk to Ms. Wilson, she will come looking for you and all of your classmates when it comes time for the BECA application process.
She's wonderful.
Yeah, so.
Well, and I, let me just add to that, too. Yeah, the, the counselors, career liaisons, the, the college advisors at the high school, the teachers who provide letters of recommendation, there is a tremendous amount of effort that goes towards this. The one hundred and fifty-one scholarships provided, there were close to three hundred applicants from our, from our schools. So some of those students got multiple scholarships. In fact, many of you have been to the, the awards ceremony, and you see students come up over and over again, and even if that, you know, for those who only, only, who, who got initial money, the five hundred dollars, a thousand, that may have paid for books, it may have paid for other resources for them. So there, this is a tremendous community effort that, that is undertaken and led by Bob, as well as Mark Smith, as you know, and, and.
A handful.
There's a handful of people who coordinate a lot of this, this work, and the application is not an easy application. It's a common one, it makes it sort of a consolidated work, but that's where the adult resources in a building come in to help them navigate and make sure that all the pieces are put together for that. So it's a tremendous amount of work. And, and here you see a couple of pictures from both the scholarship fair and the awards event, there's just a, a couple of pictures, but to give a nod to all of the app, the providers, so this is, this is the group that provided scholarships last year, and you'll notice that they range from small community organizations to very large companies who provide the scholarships as well. And that's, that's really what we wanted to make sure that we're here to, to share with you, but also to the broader community, that we're kicking off the scholarship season. And if there are those out there in the public who are watching this board meeting, or, or reading about it perhaps in the paper, if, if you have an interest in providing a scholarship, you can reach out to BECA, and you can get on the list and be part of this process, because it really does support all of our graduates, and, and it, 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 it comes back to help the community as well, so.
And if you can, I mean, we will open the twenty twenty-five scholarship application of January fifth, so right at the beginning of the year, so if you can, if anybody is interested in joining and participating, you have through mid-December, and, you know, we later if needed, but we, we, we have to cut and go come January one. Mention one more thing, that's, there's a lot that's not on our application, and speak to the senatorial, the state senatorial and delegate scholarships in particular, which are wonderful offers that many students do not know about. And so what we've done over, you know, probably the last five or six years, is work closely with Senator Bailey, with, with delegates Morgan and Crosby and Morgan's offices, and they participate, they're not on the application, but we help, you know, promote. And so we tell students, and so it ends up kind of a win-win. When we go to these scholarship awards events at the high schools, we see those folks, and, you know, it's a collective kind of thing, so. Yeah, and as Jeff said, if you have an interest in participating, great. If you have an interest in volunteering to help us, because while there's no paper anymore, it's all done electronically, there's a lot of moving parts. To get three hundred applications in, to sort through them, and to get them to the right place, you saw that list, and make sure that they're correct, they're complete, and all that, it takes a lot of eyes. So if there's any volunteers out there that want to help us, please let us know.
And we wanted to thank both the board and the school system as well for being such rich partners in, in this, for thirty-five years, so.
Yeah. I would also like to point out that it is, the scholarships go not just to Saint Mary's County Public School students, but also to students from Ricon, King's Christian, and I, I've seen students from Charles County even.
As well as home schools.
Received scholar, right. And so I, I don't want people to think that it is limited to, to simply public school students. I think the fact that you open this to, to all students is a testament to the belief of individuals in providing a hand up so that those hands come back.
That's a good point. So we, BECA, our charter is Saint Mary's County, but many of those providers have a tri-county charter, so they're, they will offer scholarships, they'll use our vehicle, but they offer scholarships, it's their money that they will give to Charles County, Calvert County, some, some even farther out, and, and home instruction, homeschool, they're part of it. So everybody's eligible, you just gotta find out about it, that's why we're here, to let people know.
Thank you guys so much for all the work that you guys are doing. Truly, BECA is very known in public schools. I know I hear it in the high school every day for months, and everybody kind of looks forward to when BECA comes out, and I heard it from the career counselor earlier this year, from Ms. Wilson, she said, oh, make sure you stay tuned for when BECA comes out. So it's really a big county-wide institution, and I think it provides a lot of hope to a lot of students.
Oh, thank you, and look forward to your application.
Any other questions?
I wanna say thank you, oh, oh, I'm sorry, you go, you go one of mine.
I attended one last year, so it was really good to hear the history.
Yeah.
So thank you for what you're doing, because the students were happy, the parents were excited.
Appreciate your support, yes.
So thank you. Thank you very much.
And it is a wonderful opportunity for students to apply for scholarship funds, and if somebody want to become a provider, a scholarship provider, five hundred dollars is good, you know, no amount is basically too small, is it, Bob?
No.
Yeah, five hundred dollars or a thousand?
We're too large.
Two hundred, you know, if you want to do it in the name of a family member or for yourself, that's doable. And it's wonderful to walk around to all the tables and see the scholarship providers and talk to them, and the large number of students who are participating in the program. It's a wonderful program, and when you made it the Common Application, that made it so much easier for everyone.
Right.
Because you make the copy, well, not copies anymore, you used to make copies, and yeah, that was back in the day.
We've been, we've been doing this a long time.
Oh, yeah. And it's done electronically.
No, thank, thank you.
It's really good, and I've read those applications, because I was on a committee which gave out a scholarship, and it was really detailed, and you could hear the individual stories of the students. And some students were struggling, they, you know, came with family issues, first-generation college students, some overcame all kind of obstacle, mental challenges, physical challenges, academic challenges, social, emotional, you name it. And they wanted to go to college, and they needed money, and they needed it desperately. So any amount of money is appreciated, I'm sure.
Absolutely, and the, the point, too, about, while there's different, there's a spectrum of different offers for types of fields to go into, there's also a, a spectrum of evaluation criteria from full merit to full need, and, and, and we, we want that, we, you know, we offer more, we lean more towards need. And so I tell students, tell your story, fill the application out, but, you know, tell your story, because that's what moves a reviewer. And it's those that take the time to do that, that, that get attention. The last thing I'll say is, of the la, over the last four or five years, we've seen with, with the increase in trades. Yeah. We've incre, we've seen more interest and demand for apprenticeships for non-col, non-traditional college. Mm-hmm. And this past year, we saw an uptick. In fact, one of our major donors took a STEM scholarship and allowed a student who went to the Forest Center to become an electrician, to go to that trade school, and paid, you know, it wasn't, it was unusual, but they said, well, you know, this, this is really helping this student along, so we're encouraging it, you don't have to go to the collegiate route, so, you know, apply, and there's, where, there's a need, we'll try to find a place for that. And as that registers, more folks in the community offering those services might contribute and help a student along. So we're not done, we'll never be done.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our final information item is Ms. McCourt with our October financial report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So before you is the October financial report. On the revenue side, you'll see that we have booked the transfer, the budget adjustment of two point six million dollars, reflecting the increased plan use of fund balance.
So how much unallocated fund balance does that leave?
Zero.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we, there is no unallocated fund balance in Saint Mary's County Public Schools.
That is absolutely correct.
Every dollar is put to a purpose.
So our original budget was two hundred and eighty-nine point nine million dollars, the revised budget is two hundred and ninety-two point five million dollars. Year-to-date revenues, one hundred and twenty-five point nine million dollars, an outstanding balance of one hundred and sixty-six point six million dollars, representing forty-three percent of our budget, has been received to date. I'd like to also reiterate the value add of the Impact Aid applications. In our current budget, we have one point eight million dollars budgeted, however, we can only obtain those funds based on the application submitted by our parents. So we encourage them to log into HAC and submit those Impact Aid applications. On the expenditure side, we have encumbrances outstanding of two hundred and two point nine million dollars, encumbrances plus year-to-date expenses of two hundred and sixty-eight point six million dollars, representing ninety-one percent of our budget expended or encumbered. A particular note are two areas that we're tracking very carefully, utilities, the weather has been very mild, so we are anticipating utility savings. If we do generate any utility savings, we'll put those back to use immediately for maintenance and operational type projects, as well as fuel savings, which is a godsend at this point. So are there any questions?
No, thank you so much for all your hard work, everything is super thorough, and I'm glad to see that all of our funds are being used to help the students.
No question.
No questions, thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. All right, and with that, our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, November twentieth. Executive session begins at five, and the open meeting begins at six, and we are adjourned.